Alright, so I'll just um do this little basic intro. It is six thirty-two on July fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-four. Um we're beginning the executive session portion of the uh Town of Sherbin Select Board Meeting. I'm gonna ask the um I'll do a longer intro for those who are here for more for the open session. I'll have kind of a bit more to say at that point. Um as well. When's that on the agenda for? Is it seven thirty? Is it then?
Seven forty-five.
Seven forty-five. I have a bit more to say. But for now, I'm gonna ask the Assistant Town Administrator to please read the executive session agenda.
Good evening. We are meeting with Town Council in Executive Session pursuant to Mass General Law, Chapter Thirty-A, Section Twenty-One-A and Three, and Suffolk Construction versus Decam, four forty-nine Mass, four forty-four parentheses, two thousand and seven, to discuss Phoenix Partners Greenwood Street Development LLC versus Sherbin Zoning Board of Appeals, Massachusetts Housing Appeals Committee Number Two Thousand Twenty-four dash O-three, and pursuant to General Law, Chapter Thirty-A, Section Twenty-One-A, seven, to comply with or act under the authority of any general or special law or federal granted aid requirements, specifically the Public Records Law, General Law, Chapter Four, Section Seven, parentheses, twenty-six, to discuss privileged communication from Town Council regarding litigation.
Alright, thank you very much. Um can I have a uh so I as chair, I move that a executive session is necessary for the um agenda item as read by the Assistant Town Administrator. Um do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, now. Okay, people are able to unmute themselves. I want to make sure. Jeff, you just have to give me a thumbs up to vote for this vote, but I think it's gonna be all set. I think we got at least three votes. Alright, I have a motion to second to go to executive session. All in favor, uh Stephen?
Aye.
Uh Mary Ann, you muted. I read that lips. Aye. Uh Paul?
Aye.
And Jeff, you can just give me a thumbs up if you want. Okay, very good. Very good. Okay, please pause the recording right now and put.
I think I think he just unmuted us. Can you hear me now?
Yes.
I turned it back. We were we were muted by the host. Which is a good thing in my case.
Yeah, for this meeting, but anyways, um let's um let's I guess put people in the waiting room. It should not be an executive session. Keep people here that will be in the exact session. Pause the recording. And maybe Jeremy, could you make Diane maybe a co-host? I know Diane gave up her coast hood to you, whatever else, but I think it'll be useful because Diane's gonna see people. You know. And he'd be coming and going and muted and unmuted and stuff like that.
Yep, can do.
Right. And if someone can, like I said, pause the recording. Alright, thank you very much. Welcome to the open session of today's. That's July fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-four um Select Board Meeting. Um just a quick little intro on today's. Actually, um that's why I gotta do the agenda. Uh Diane, uh can you just read the agenda and please add a um section just about public comments? I wish to make a public comment.
Alright, good evening. After I read the agenda, the board can vote to amend or approve the agenda. There is a public comment section given by Eric. Items may be taken out of order and topics not anticipated forty-eight hours in advance may be added. We have one item tonight is that affordable housing project proposal presented by Bob Murchison.
Very good, thank you. Um just quick, oh, I have a motion relative to the agenda. Sorry, I gotta go through process.
Move approval.
Alright.
Second.
Alright, all in favor, Stephen?
Aye.
Jeff?
Aye.
Paul?
Aye.
Mary Ann?
Aye.
Right, I am I as well. Just a quick um public comment I wanna make and has nothing to do with this actual agenda item. It's a quick thing I wanna do at the last um meeting, but we only have a handful of people and I think you gotta do it when we have a good number of people. I just wanted to give um a quick thank you. I don't know if people know this, but Jim Kolb, the Chairman of Library Building Committee, is moving out of town. And um I know obviously the library is a bit of a polarizing subject, but I can tell you myself that um I've I've been working with Jim for at least, I don't know, six years in this, maybe five years in this. And um what he's brought to the to the effort and what he brought to actually get this library done is outstanding. He's brought a huge amount of professionalism. I don't know if people even realize that, that you know, um a lot of people on that committee in general, pretty good Jim, signed up for like, you know, a two to three year effort and I don't know what is that, seven years, eight years? It's, you know, it's been quite a bit there. I just wanna give him a thanks because he's, you know, he's moving on and um he's take us right for the settlement we had with the um the, you know, cash positive settlement we made with the contractor there. And again, I was in the trenches with him as well as um Jeff, and I could tell you that um what he brought in the dedication he made was huge to this community. And I just wanted to give him a quick thanks.
Yeah, ditto.
Okay, so moving on to the main agenda. I'm just gonna make a quick little uh state uh few little statements about what we're about to um see here. Um about this meeting as a whole, uh you know, several people have approached me and approached other people about, you know, um what is this about? Is this regulatory or the decisions can be made? Um what's going on here? Other committees you um are involved with this, so on and so forth. What this is, this is um we have a large stakeholder in town. Uh Bob Murchison, you know, through Phoenix Partners, has requests um basically this agenda item in this um discussion. And we all know he has multiple um forty Bs proposed throughout the town right now. And you know, he's proposing some kind of change. I think a lot of us have seen it, talked about it. Um this is a mechanism that he can present it to as large a group as possible, also have it recorded, collect our questions, collect our ideas. Um as a as I, you know, Bob knows and we talked about it, the Select Board, um under advisement, Council is not gonna make opinions or a vote, but we're gonna ask questions. And I'm gonna, you know, organize this meeting that Bob's gonna give a presentation. I'm gonna take questions from the board, from the Select Board, and I'll take questions from the um from the public as well. Administratively, because I I know this is kind of um again, kind of polarizing. There's a lot of passion. There's a thing, opinions one way or the other here. We run a little bit differently. I have um everyone is kind of muted. You have their quest to be unmuted. I wanna keep it kind of good orderly fashion here. I ask everyone to use your Zoom raise hand feature. If you don't know where that is, spend the rest of my talking, which will be another five minutes, figuring out where your raise hand feature is. If I see you raise it and lower it, then I'll know you found it. And um and that'll be a good thing. Um people yelling and going back and forth. I only can see, I think, twenty-five people on my Zoom screen, uh people on other pages and things like that. You know, it it's very important to use that, and I take people in order that have raised their hands. Um and on that note, you know, I'm gonna run it like many meetings. Um I'm uh if I see many people raise their hands, I'm gonna selectively take those people who haven't spoken yet. If someone's spoken two or three times, and they kind of go down the list, and I'm gonna, you know, take, I want everyone to have a good opportunity here. I'm not gonna put a time limit. People have asked me, I'm not gonna put a timeline on people speaking, but if it starts to get crazy, then maybe I do put a two or three minute time limit on it. This is a one item meeting. I, you know, I think we can get through this in a good orderly fashion, and I'm very positive about it. Um you know, if we've learned anything over this last weekend, it's, you know, keep politics, less polarizing. Um we have several committees and boards. I think there's eight. So what I'll do when I begin this, I'll have um I'll do it before the presentation. I don't know how many people are here, or maybe if you wanna wait till more people log on, I give them a few minutes. I'm gonna call a committee. Whoever's chair in that committee can speak up and take all call in the order. And I'm gonna do it in the order that's listed on the town's webpage. If you look at the town's webpage, there's clearly the seven or eight different ones listed. I'm just gonna call that committee, and whoever chairs, you know, can call the order. Um what's our total? Oh, we're up to seventy-two participants. There's no way I'm gonna see people raising their physical hands. So let me do that right now. Um I make questions from the Select Board alone, otherwise I'm gonna start um calling the different committees and having their chairs calling them to order. Okay. Let me just bring them up what I have here. On the Select Board. Okay, Land Acquisition Committee. I think I saw Frank Jenkins here. Frank, you're you're in the room, right? Yeah, Frank, if you if you could please um, actually, you have to request, we did this thing after request to unmute. If other, I, by the way, I made every single, I made every single Select Board member a uh co-host. If you could help me out with like, you know, Diane and Jeremy as well, like unmuting Frank, so like he can call this meeting to order, and um if people also use their raise hand features and so on.
I think the way that the forum is the uh ZBA though. I just looked at Board of Health. You may have to ask each of them if they have a quorum, because they won't wanna do a vote if they don't have a quorum.
So Frank, do you have a quorum? I am a member of your committee.
The way that this this muting works is that we'll ask you to unmute, and then you'll have to unmute yourself. So Frank, I'm gonna ask you to unmute, and then you'll have to unmute yourself, and then you can talk.
Oh, uh I do not see a quorum.
Okay, that's fine. Let's put the next one down. Um Planning Board. Is Addie here? Vice Chair of Planning Board.
Frank has his hand up.
Okay, does someone unmute Frank? I'm having trouble because I'm keeping my agenda open. I'm keeping the the webpage open, so I'm also not seeing the full Zoom screen.
I'm I'm the Vice Chair of the Planning Board. I I see at least one, two other members of the Planning Board. Steph Harrison, Jim Guarino is uh we would there's so that we are a forum, so I don't know if Rob Wolf, is Rob Wolf here?
Didn't see him.
Okay, so I'll uh call the Planning Board um to order. Oh.
Do I get it? The other thing I'll ask real quick, oh sorry. If people can uh put your committee, if you're here and you're gonna on that committee, you're gonna call the order, please put that in your Zoom title. So in your Zoom title, if you just put Planning Board or PB or something like that, so it helps us to differentiate who is who and speaking on behalf of what.
And you do that by clicking the three dots in the upper right-hand corner of your picture, and then there's a rename.
Correct.
Alright, I think a show of hands will do it. I don't know if you can see. Uh does it look like you have a? Okay. Let me ask uh real quick.
Jim, are you uh in favor of opening the Planning Board? Just raise your hand. Perfect, we're in order.
Okay, very good. Okay, next on the list is uh Sherbin Affordable Housing Trust. Who is here to represent that? Use your raise hand feature. Oh, it's also Frank. Jim Guarino. Do you have a um, do you have a quorum? Is there someone here for the Housing Trust? I'm not sure who's on it. Is there someone here? Alright. I'm gonna just move on to the next one. Um Advisory Committee. Is Dan here? Or Nora? Okay, do you have a quorum? Do you wanna call the order? If you want, you can just use people's hands.
I see Paul Blut, but I do not see anyone else, so we do not have quorum.
Okay. Now, keeping my lack of quorum, you can also still discuss, and it just kind of protects you. Even though we do have legal opinion, which says that, you know, a quorum of people, as long as they don't dialogue amongst each other, can still ask questions in a meeting, so we're still good here, but this is a good belt and suspenders that we're doing here. Um former Advisory Historical Commission. Raise his hand if you represent the historical commission, Jane. Do you have a quorum here? Is that a?
I believe Suzie is the chair, um but there is three of us here that I see.
Okay. Is that a quorum?
That is Suzie.
Yes, we have a quorum.
We have a quorum.
You're doing it. This called order, get a quick.
I'm calling the meeting to order.
That's good enough. And then what's the what's the other historical one right after that? Um Historical District Commission? Same thing over there. Okay, let's move on. Uh ZBA. Gotta have a few guys here, right? I know Rick, you're just a member, but who who's uh? Does it look like we have a?
Um Zach, uh yeah, we're guys. I see Todd and and our fearless leader Zach. I saw Zach on his iPhone. Zach, do you wanna speak?
Oh yes, thanks for unmuting me. Yes, uh Zach McBride, Chair of the ZBA. Thank you, Rick. Um I'd like to call the meeting to order. I believe we have a quorum. Uh so we'll do uh open the meeting by roll. Uh is John here? John Fitch? No. Uh Rick, uh Todd Labby?
Here.
Uh Rick Novak?
Here, in favor of opening.
Right, and Zach McBride here. Meeting is open for the ZBA. Thank you.
Good. And last, and definitely at least, Board of Health, is Daryl here?
She's here, but I didn't see anyone else, I don't think. Do you see anyone, Daryl?
Diana?
Mark Oram's here also, but he's not a member.
Yeah.
Alright, now I I hope I'm unmuted now?
You are.
Okay, terrific. Uh so yes, I see a quorum, so I'd like to call the Board of Health meeting to order. We'll do a roll call uh announcement of presence. So Diana Hook?
Diana Hook, present.
And I saw Steve Constantine.
Present.
Okay, and Daryl Beardsley, present. Thank you.
Alright. Hmm very good. Like everyone who's actually posted for today. Okay. And uh administratively, so I'm next gonna ask Bob to give his presentation. Now, I know we cut limits onto like who could actually share screens. Do we make Bob a co-host, or can we actually just give him just uh this the straight permission to share his screen? Might have to make him a co-host to um to allow him to give a presentation. Now, Bob, you have your presentation on your computer ready to go. I know you emailed it earlier today.
Uh Eric, I'm I'm happy to share that presentation.
Okay, okay. What's that? But Bob, you'll still speak to it, right? Okay.
Would you like me to share that now?
Yeah, I guess let's get going. Let's start the presentation.
Okay, well, thank you, Eric, and um I guess um I'll start by saying that I I apologize for causing all the hullabaloo of twelve different uh boards and committees needing to uh open and close their meetings tonight. That that's gonna take half the perhaps half the time just getting that done, but uh obviously it is good hygiene, as Eric said. Um I I guess I I'd like to start before I um move into the slides, I'd like to start by just saying that um you know, I'm grateful for everybody coming out and having this conversation. Honestly, I've wanted to have a conversation like this for probably three years now. Um and it's just been impossible, uh and for many, many reasons. It's nobody in particular's fault, but it's just been impossible to have this conversation. And you know, now we're having the conversation because, I mean, people are gonna have different opinions about this, but you know, there's a bit of a crisis uh going on with the town facing uh five forty Bs and the ZBA having denied uh two of them. Um and uh you know, who knows what their opinions are on the on the coming projects. Um but the, you know, the opening two denials are not uh uh not a good thing for the town, and they're not a good thing for the for the projects, and they're not a good thing for for developing affordable housing in a in a timely way, obviously. Um but I, so I am grateful to have this conversation. I had one one conversation uh with the Planning Board maybe a year ago, and there might have been ten or twelve people in the room, and we went through a lot of issues that night. Um but there was some real frustration on my part, because I I really put a lot of the issues out uh and wanted to have a two-way dialogue. Um you know, people have heard my thoughts before, but it's been very, very difficult for me to get um kind of uh uh feedback in a in a public policy way, not, you know, obviously, there's been plenty of feedback on the actual projects in the ZBA process. Um and that's been uh totally appropriate, but kind of a broader public policy conversation, and you know, for better or for worse, um I have decided that I wanna spend a lot of my time uh in the last year and in the coming uh year or two um trying to make some change in town. Uh and um I'll get into, you know, very briefly what those changes I'm seeking are, and you know, some people might agree, or you know, a fair number of people don't agree with some of the change I wanna bring to town. Um and that's okay, but the thing that's been missing from the conversation, or excuse me, missing from all of this is the conversation. Um and trying to kind of find some ways that uh we can move forward in in productive ways and um and perhaps compromise. Um and you know, some folks might say, well, why do we need to compromise? Bob's one person, and he has one set of views. Well, that is true, um but we do have laws, uh and um those laws are available to cause change. That you can you can cause change in town uh through the democratic process. Um you know, you can bring people out to to town meeting or to town elections and and have votes. Unfortunately, and this to me is is very sad, um the democracy is not um a very successful in Sherbin. We get a hundred and fifty people at a town meeting making all of our laws. You know, if we're lucky, we get five or six hundred people at a town election, electing all of our officials, and to me, that's not um that's not great democracy, that level of participation. Um and so I've kind of sought other ways uh to impact public policy. One is through Chapter Forty-B, which is the state law that we can spend just a minute uh talking about tonight. Um and you know, there are other ways um in kind of the legal process to all also affect change, and kind of that's that's what's going on. Um so I guess um i- i- and finally, my in the uh my last thing in the preamble I wanna say is that I feel, I I woke up, you know, at the beginning of June, or maybe it was mid-June, I don't know. Uh it was around the time the ZBA was um working their way towards a denial of the Farm Road Project. And I realized that um that we're we're kind of in a mutual uh situation which back in you know, many, many years ago, when people talked about nuclear deterrence, they talked about mutually assured destruction. And I feel a little bit like um I'm in a in a situation with the town and with the ZBA of mutually assured destruction. Um we're gonna go forward if if nothing changes. We're gonna go forward over the next couple of years. Um and we're gonna spend a lot of time in litigation, and we're gonna, you know, the town is gonna spend a huge amount of tax money. I'm gonna frankly spend a lot of money, uh that could be otherwise put to good purposes. Um and I I started thinking to myself, well, are there any things I can do to change the trajectory of that mutually assured destruction? Of the town spending a million dollars in litigation and my spending a half a million or three quarters of a million dollars in litigation? And then we end up in the same place, in my opinion, and I know there are folks out there who have different opinions about what the outcomes of all the litigation will be, but I think many folks who are in leadership in town understand um the Housing Appeals Committee and how it works and what the standards are, and therefore, what the outcomes are likely to be. Um and so I look at it and I say, we're gonna spend all this money, and we're gonna end up in the same place, and that place is is a bit suboptimal. I didn't come into all of this intending to do five forty Bs. Uh you know, the the farm road property was never intended to be a a forty B. It turned into a forty B uh in all honesty because of my frustration. Um I just got so frustrated that I said, well, let's just go down a different road, and that's what I did. Um and um you know, so so five forty Bs was not the plan. Um but that's where we are now, but it doesn't have to be where we end up, and that's what the conversation is about tonight. Uh I'm gonna go through a couple of quick initial slides, but I'm gonna move through them quickly because they're my opinions, and you all don't really care about my opinions, and I really wanna talk about this idea I have to get us uh to a more palatable place for many of you out there. Um and I think uh to, in my opinion, a better place for the town. Um and um uh so I'd like to, you know, talk about that more than anything else tonight, but let me just uh indulge me in just running through these slides very quickly. Uh so the first one, please, uh Jeremy? So um I wanna, obviously, you've heard this from me many, many times. I wanna develop real affordable housing so that we're doing our fair share in the region. That's a primary, primary goal for me. And one of the things you'll see in this proposal is that it retains the development of forty units of deeply affordable housing, and we can talk about that further in a minute. I wanna bring new families, obviously, by developing affordable housing. You're gonna bring new families with different life experiences. I think that's gonna benefit all of us, and it'll definitely benefit uh our kids in the school system or our grandkids. Um I wanna bring economic vibrancy to Sherbin. I think if we do development right, we can bring economic vibrancy. I, it's my opinion that we have not had an economic vibrancy. We've had economic stagnation. I'd like to see development that lowers tax rates and improves the ability to execute uh on our goals, whether it's schools or services or anything else. Uh lastly, I uh it's the wrong, the beginning of the sentence is the wrong word. The word should be promote. I wanna promote a regulatory process that's consistent, fair, based on professional science and law, and um that's an ongoing um hope of mine. Uh next slide, please, Jeremy. So why are we here? So Sherbin's been saying, and if you read the Housing Production Plan and you heat uh read the General Plan uh for decades, um but they're local, that they want this smart growth. They they want New England-style cottage housing. They wanna bring uh lower-end market rate housing into the mix in town. That's, it says that in our plan. And yet, um the conditions are preventing that. Um decisions are made uh by, as I said earlier, a small number of people show up at town meeting uh who have opinions uh about development and about a lot of things, and I tip my cap. They show up, they vote, they participate, people with those strong opinions, and they're getting the laws they want. As I said before, I worry about the the level of participation. Um but you know, tip of the cap. Um the town regulations in many cases can be arbitrary and inconsistently enforced. Um new by right housing is routinely denied. Um and therefore, I'm gonna use, in my process, I'm gonna use the courts in administrative appeals for projects as necessary. That's not the right answer. That that is wasteful for me, and it's wasteful for the town. I don't wanna do that. Uh and lastly is what we're about here tonight, a more collaborative process that would benefit everyone. Uh this, I slide, uh next slide, sorry, Jeremy. Uh I wanna go through this really quickly. You guys are tired of hearing this. Basically, forty B allows uh for waivers of um restrictive local requirements in favor of meeting applicable state and federal standards, and a minimum of twenty-five percent has to be affordable. Uh inevitably, and this is the part often people question me on. Uh the why, they say, why does it have to be so dense? Well, the answer is because the economics don't work. You can't build a for- basically, the the way the state has created the ability for a developer to make uh create affordable housing in many cases, and not in the apartment buildings, but in the the more typical forty Bs, is they allow the increased density to make the economics work for the developer, and that's how it all happens. So it has to be more dense by definition. Um lastly, if the town denies uh a forty B project, it's litigated at the Housing Appeals Committee, which is a developer-friendly venue, and the developer wins. I've heard statistics, you know, Rick can can quote his statistics. I've heard ninety-four percent. In Sherbin, we've denied six forty B projects uh over the last decade. Uh it certainly has caused developer delays. Uh it caused one developer to go bankrupt, which was horrible actually for the community, because it put the whole project upside down for fifteen years, and it's still digging out of a bad situation. And and we caused that as a town. We caused that, and may maybe people celebrated the bankruptcy of a developer, but uh it didn't work out well for the town. And lastly, I would say um of all of those six cases, the town has yet to prevail in any of them. Now, I'm not saying the town has lost all six of them, but it has not won a single case. Next slide just shows people often say, oh, you're putting it here, you're putting it there. Well, I'm putting it. My projects are spread all over town, and I think this just illustrates that, you know, I'm not, I'm not loading things up in one part of town. It's all over town. Now, we, uh next slide, please, Jeremy. So now we get to what I think is important tonight. And let me just fix my uh screen here for a second. Thank you. Um I tried to set this up so that we could go project by project and understand what I'm proposing. So the first is Farm Road. That's the one we just finished the hearing, and it was recently denied. I've appealed it. It is now in litigation. Uh that was proposed to be thirty-two homes. The compromise solution is five single-family homes that are all compliant with local regulations. I heard somebody say at the Select Board the other night, oh, well, Bob, Bob wants to, you know, pretend like the denial never happened, and um he needs to start over on the permitting. Well, the answer is I am starting over on the permitting. I will go back to I will go back to all the regulatory boards required. And in the case of Farm Road, it'll be the Board of Health, it'll be the Conservation Commission, and it will be the Planning Board, I think, though, and then of course, the Building Inspector. But I am going back to the start and I will permit all of those. Uh, it'll be uh an open and transparent process that will go through. All the meetings will be, you know, the agendas will be posted, people can follow along. They can show up at the meetings and they can make comments. That is all completely transparent, there's nothing hidden in that process. I am not asking in this compromise solution for any waivers or any breaks on local regulations. The five homes, in my opinion, meet all of the lo, or will meet all of the local regulations um that are in place. So Washington Street, that, that currently, and it may be a little confusing to folks because originally that was proposed as a forty-unit apartment building. But as, as many folks know, we've gone back to Greenwood. The town said, no, we don't want four homes on Greenwood on nine tenths of an acre, we want them on two acres. And the ZBA denied the project. I've gone back and I'm uh fairly far along in permitting those four homes in a local uh locally compliant uh manner. Again, no waivers from any local regulations. So assuming that that goes through, the Washington Street apartment building, which was forty units, the land, the piece of land that that building would sit on becomes smaller because some of the land had to be used to meet the two-acre requirement of the Sherbin zoning uh law in that neighborhood. Uh, so we're left with the ability on the remaining ten point two acres to propose a thirty-unit apartment building. So if we reopen the ZBA uh process, we're in a stay with the ZBA right now on that, on that project, we will show them uh the, the ten point two acre site and we will skinny down the building, skinny down the um uh the septic system. Then perhaps the number of wells will drop by one. The project will just become slightly smaller, uh, you know, twenty-five percent smaller. And that is the current trajectory. The compromise solution uh would be um four single-family homes. Again, compliant with all local regulations. There's some question in my mind whether those will be uh traditional um uh lots with with what's called, you know, uh typical frontage and by right, or whether we might use a uh for uh one or two of them, or it'd be two of them, two or three of them, uh that we would use a uh a zoning law that was passed three or four years ago. Marion Neutra was the author of it and the primary proponent. It's called Open Space Subdivision. It's possible we would use that zoning uh new zoning regulation to do those homes over there. Uh, again, if we did, we would be compliant still with all local regulations. We're not asking for any waivers. Uh, on Brush Hill, Brush Hill, not a lot could change, unfortunately. It, it is a site that will have to remain a forty B. It, what I did do, and I made the unilateral change um to take it from twenty-eight bedrooms to eighteen bedrooms. And uh it'll be uh mostly two bedrooms and a couple of three bedrooms instead of the four bedrooms and three bedrooms I had originally intended. I'd really hoped to make that into a more of a family community. Now that it's mostly two bedrooms, it's likely to be um, well, smaller families or, or downsizing folks or, or, you know, young, young folks coming in. And then lastly, um, the current trajectory on Coolidge Street, as people know, I filed for a project eligibility letter for a forty-unit apartment building. That building can only be uh proposed and built um if water and sewer comes to North Sherbin. There's been a lot of progress uh as people in town know uh on bringing the water and sewer into a North Sherbin. Uh, this, this uh deeply affordable housing would sit on, on a five-acre site, which is frankly, a big site uh for a forty-unit apartment building in a lot of communities. And um uh, so that's been proposed and is the current trajectory. The only difference in the compromise solution is that same building uh would be supported by um by the town. So that's kind of um a, a, a quick run-through of the, of the proposal. Jeremy, if you go to the next slide, I want to look at the costs and benefits of the current trajectory in the compromise solution. I'll try to move through this quickly. On Farm Road, I don't really know what the litigation uh cost would be for the town, but I'm guessing three hundred and fifty thousand dollars. A lot of time and effort from volunteer leaders and town employees and four hundred thousand dollars of lost tax revenue uh because the, the project would be delayed by a couple of years uh to go through the uh the litigation process. The compromise solution is an eighty-four percent reduction in density. It's a sixty-seven percent reduction in septic density. And it's two hundred thousand dollars a year of increase in tax revenue to the town. On Washington Street, if we stay on the current trajectory, you know, the ZBA has not gone through this, but it makes me quite nervous to see Greenwood and Farm Road uh denied. Uh, I'm not saying they're going to deny it, I don't know, but there certainly is possible litigation, cost, time, lost tax revenue. If that, if the ZBA were to deny the, the Washington Street, if they approve it, then that's great and we can move forward. Uh, under the compromise solution, we get an eighty-seven percent reduction in unit density, a sixty-five percent reduction in septic density, and a hundred and sixty thousand dollar annual increase in tax revenue. Greenwood Street is not really um kind of uh assuming that the process that we're quite far along in continues. That's not really gonna be very different under the current trajectory in the compromise solution. That'll, in some ways, the compromise solution is already being executed in that the town spoke loudly and wanted uh for, or, or wanted any single-family development to be on two-acre lots and that's, that's what's happening. So in some ways, the compromise solution is going forward there. Brush Hill, not much to say on that, there's probably a hundred and ten thousand dollar annual increase in, in tax revenue when it's, uh, when it's built. And then I'd point you to the last uh, the bottom of the slide. So the only difference between the current trajectory and the compromise solution on Coolidge Street, because I believe deeply the building will be built. The only difference will be in the current trajectory, if it were to be, need to be litigated, and I hope it wouldn't since it will have water and sewer. But if it needed to be litigated, it could be delayed by several years. But in my opinion, it will be built. Uh, the compromise solution is simply the town getting on board and being supportive of a collaborative process to get that project done. And you know, if you go through all of this, you, you might recognize that my highest priority among all of the things I've brought forth to town, my highest priority is to build in a, a deeply affordable community where we're pulling our, our fair share, as I said at the beginning of the presentation. That's the most important thing. And that's why my ask is for the town to support that project. And then we can go forward with a lot less angst on a lot of these other sites. Uh, next slide, Jeremy. Uh, and this is just uh the site uh for the Coolidge Street Apartments. I think people have seen this before, I won't really speak to it, but we may want to come back to this uh drawing later on as we uh, as we um, you know, get into a discussion. So I apologize uh that that took twenty or twenty-five minutes. But uh, I think it was good to kind of set the uh, uh, set the uh, the context for a discussion. So you can see, my ask is that town leaders give a full-throated support for the Coolidge Street apartment project. Uh, and that the town regulatory boards apply existing regulations fairly consistently and efficiency. And I'm asking, Jeremy has been a great add for the town. And one of the reasons, among many, that he's been a great add for the town is he understands a lot of our challenges because he's a civil engineer. He gets this stuff. And I'm certainly, I am, you know, well aware uh that the regulatory boards are elected and appointed, in some cases elected, in some cases appointed by the Select Board, that those boards make these decisions. Other, the Select Board doesn't make these decisions. Town, you know, Mark Oram doesn't make the decisions. Jeremy Marsette doesn't make the decisions. They're made by the elected officials and the appointed officials. And I one hundred percent understand that and support it. But I think having good oversight and kind of um folks in the process to help make it happen um more effectively uh would be really valuable. And I'm asking for that. So Jeremy, I, i- if you want to take the slides down for the moment, um, I can see if anyone's gone to sleep. And uh, uh, I'll give it back to you, Eric. Thank you all for um, for listening.
Hey, thank you very much, Bob. Thank you. And as we do, um, asked Jeremy to keep the presentation nearby, just in case, you know, the questions arise where a certain slide's relevant. In general, I don't lift the slides up because I have enough time seeing everyone, but you're like this tiny little centimeter by centimeter thing on the right-hand side. It's challenging. There is something I forgot to say before, so this is why I gotta take better notes, is that um the chat room is on, but the chat feature is not part of the public record. It is not a mechanism to ask questions. If someone sees it, happens to see it, wants to answer a question, and sure, maybe we'll do something, you know, that may happen. Um, I see the chat that feature as the same thing as like people whispering to each other in the room. You know what I mean? When you're in, when you have a regular meeting, um, public meeting. So you can chat, you can do what you want, it's not part of the public record and there's no obligation. In fact, it's very likely with this many people that any questions will be answered with it.
Eric, just if, if I might, I have one just very brief ask of the community, if I could. And that is um, if, if folks could refer to me by my name and Bob, Bob, or if you want to call me by my dad's name, Mr. Murchison, you can do that too. But I would prefer, at least in the context of this conversation tonight, to not be referred to in the third person as the applicant or the developer or whatever it might be. We, I, I am your neighbor. And I um, I find it dehumanizing when people go to that third person thing. Maybe that's an oversensitivity, but I would be really grateful uh if folks could help me with that.
Very good, understood there. All right, as I indicated earlier, I'll first take any questions um we have from the Select Board. Does the Select Board right now have any questions from what they saw? Uh, yeah, Paul, I know, I know, Paul, you don't like the raise hair. exempt people as I, the raise hand. Paul and I always have this thing about the raise hand feature, but whatever. Yeah, Paul, go ahead, please.
So I'm, I'm a lawyer by trade. And when people talk about compromise and so on, it usually ends up in documents of some kind or other that I end up to being required to review for the municipalities that I represent. What paperwork are you envisioning here to implement this kind of deal? I mean, I've never seen a contract using the word full-throated. What uh, what is this paperwork gonna look like?
Sure, um, that's a great question, Paul. And uh, uh, you're totally right, I'm not a lawyer. And so I'm not the perfect person to answer your question at all. You know, I've been around negotiations and agreements and, and done a lot of things in that space, but I am not a lawyer. And um, I guess, you know, I would say that there certainly would be a fair amount of pay, what, what lawyers call papering, and investment people call it that too, uh, papering of an agreement. However, I am a believer, and, and this comes from being a non-lawyer, to be honest. I am in a, I'm a, I'm a believer that there are times when it's really hard to articulate in a very legal way uh an agreement between two parties. Um, and I think you can deal with that in two ways. One, you can do your best to trust each other and for both sides to operate in good faith. And um, I think the town can operate in good faith and I can operate in good faith. Uh, I'm confident of that. And I think there are other, what Ronald Reagan, I think, used to um refer to as trust and verify. And so, you know, I'm just gonna throw this out there as an example, but let's talk about Farm Road for a second, right? So we can start working on a comp, on working, on collaborating and coming up with a locally compliant uh plan for those five homes. And I, you know, it, it's not like this will take me forever, I did it two years ago, right? In other words, this is not all brand-new engineering, a little bit of it's new, but, but a lot of it's already been done. And, you know, for example, uh Paul, I think in that situation, what you do is I, I start to permit these things under uh, it's chapter forty A, right, Paul?
Yes.
Yeah, you're right. So I start to permit them under chapter forty A. And we just kinda, you know, Rick and I stand down uh in the Housing Appeals Committee. Uh, and we just kinda hang out and twiddle our thumbs at the Housing Appeals Committee while Bob and uh the regulatory boards race around and try to get this done. And if we can't get it done, well, then Rick and I go back uh to the Housing Appeals Committee and we do what we have to do. I don't want to do that, I, I kinda doubt Rick wants to do, to be honest with you. But um, uh, to me, that's a trust but verify answer, right? And so I don't have an answer for everything, Paul. How we paper it, I think a lot of it can be papered, but I think a lot of it can just be in that trust but verify, or frankly, um, you know, good faith. You, you know, you, you shake hands, uh, you, you kind of, you come to an agreement and you go do it. And uh, you know, I, 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 I don't live in fear of papering every last thing because I do business with people that I, generally, I do business with people that I trust. And uh, I live in this town. And if the town tells me something, I expect that that's what they're gonna do. And I think the town can expect that of me. So yeah, I, that's not a perfect answer for a lawyer, I know, Paul. But it is my answer, so I'm, I'm sticking with it.
Anyone else on the Select Board before I go to the general public? All right. Oh, Marion, yes, and thank you, using the raise hand feature.
Here, here it goes. Bob, we've had a lot of talks about this. You know that uh many of us in town are of, are in favor of affordable housing. And uh, you know, I and others have been working for a long time to get affordable housing on Coolidge Street. And uh, I think we're getting there, but as you're, you're aware, as well as I, that Toll Brothers, the developer that's closest to getting us there, hasn't yet committed. And we don't yet have an IMA with either Natick or Framingham. And uh, there's just still a lot of hoops to go through there. So I'm just wondering what's your plan uh to get water and sewer to your project on Coolidge Street? Given that that project that you're proposing looks like it's sort of the keystone of this whole, like, global uh conversation.
Well, I mean, I, I think you know, Marion, what the, the answer to that is, is that uh the town uh has voted to effectively work with Toll Brothers uh that, and, and, you know, to say it, anything different, I think, is, is a, not a correct characterization. The town has done a deal uh with Toll Brothers. You Toll Brothers, you build water and sewer for North Sherbin and we're gonna let you build a hundred and twenty apartments and sixty-seven townhomes. Uh, you guys, you, you did a deal. I, you know, whether I like that deal or don't like that deal is, is irrelevant. If I, if I were the, on the Select Board back when this all started and it wasn't even Toll Brothers back then, I would have been in favor of the town uh uh funding it itself. And part of that would be through development, but that the town would do it. And because as I've said in many, many regulatory boards and, or the Planning Board in lots of places over the years, I believe that if we invest in our town, then we're gonna get a return on that investment. And I've always said that water and sewer, you know, an investment in water and sewer, the town will win. The town will get a positive return on that investment. Uh, the town will get a positive return on that investment, and I've always believed that, and I believe the town. You know, the deal you made with, with the, the developers uh on that property. Prior to Toll Brothers and now Toll Brothers, I, I'm not suggesting it's a terrible deal, but it's a deal. The deal is, they build that infrastructure for you, for the town, and you uh set them up to make some money building. I mean, they're not, they're not doing it for nothing. They're doing it because they're gonna make money. Now, the way you wrote the legislation was that if there's excess capacity. Um, and it's pretty clear that there will be substantial excess capacity of a lot more than would be necessary to build this building. That that is available uh for, for people to come in and use, and frankly, what better thing? Could it be used for than building forty deeply affordable apartments? That, that brings Sherbin a huge distance into the twenty first century. Of providing its fair share of not only affordable housing, but deeply affordable housing for the region. I'm not saying we have those folks here in town. We, we don't. They can't afford to live here. Um, but we have an obligation to do our small piece of it. And what better use for the excess capacity of the water and sewer than that purpose? And that's my proposal, obviously. So, no, I'm well aware of all of these issues with Toll Brothers. I hope that Toll Brothers wouldn't walk away because somebody comes along and apport- and and proposes some affordable housing next to their project. That would be wrong, and I don't think Toll Brothers will do that. I think Toll Brothers. If they can make money on the, on developing the water and sewer and building Coolidge Crossing and building Meadowbrook um Commons, they're gonna do it. That's what, they're in the business of making money. Um, and I don't think they're gonna care one way or the other, what happens on my property. So that's, you know, you, you, you might disagree, Marion, but that's my, that's my perspective on it, and frankly, I'm a developer, so. I have some understanding of how Toll Brothers thinks. They're, you know, they're a behemoth uh uh corporation, and I'm one guy. But we both develop homes, so.
All right, thank you. Yeah, Marion, follow up?
Uh, yeah, I just have to correct something you said, Bob. I think you, you didn't mean it this way, but just so for the public, if you don't mind. Uh, uh, those projects were approved uh on their own merit before Toll Brothers ever became involved. Uh, and so the town approved them because we wanted affordable housing. And when the ZBA approved them, they said the only way this can be safely done. Is with uh water and sewer from adjacent towns. And that was the uh, that was the instigation of the process before Toll Brothers ever came on, just so everybody understands that.
The only slight correction of your correction, Marion, is I would say that uh the Meadowbrook, while the Coolidge Crossing project was fully approved by the ZBA. Two and a half, three years ago, whatever it was, uh, I agree with you on that. The Meadowbrook Common, uh, Meadowbrook Commons project of sixty seven townhomes. Uh, a preliminary development plan was approved. There is a, I'm someone who went through that process of preliminary development plan. To uh full special permit from the planning board. Eric, you remember it well. We sat there for hours and hours doing that project. And I can tell you, that's what approval of a project is, your special permit, not your preliminary development plan. So there's a lot of work uh for Meadowbrook Commons to, you know, and I'm not saying it's not approvable, um, but it's not approved.
Yeah, I was just referring to the uh affordable housing.
Oh, and not Meadowbrook Commons. Okay, I, I'm sorry about that then. Okay, yeah. But without Meadowbrook Commons, the affordable, the, the thirty units of affordable housing. And a hundred and twenty total apartments don't get built because they need the expanded scale of Meadowbrook Commons to be able to pay for the infrastructure.
All right, anything else on the board? Okay, see nothing. I'll take questions from the public. If there's any questions, I encourage you to use the raise hand feature, and I'll take people in order of the raise hand. Okay, we got one, one. We got two. All right, Brian, you're up. Um, can people on the other mistresses help unmute Brian?
Can you hear me now?
It's again, how you doing, Brian?
Good, how are you? Thank you. Brian Moore, live at forty nine Farm Road. I'm both a former volunteer and a former elected official in the town. Um, I just wanted to touch base. Um, and remind some people and make uh just one brief comment. The first one is that. The activities that took place in uh North Sherbin with regards to the, what we're all referring to now as the Toll Brothers Development. You know, went through a public meeting process at Town Hall Meeting, if I'm, if I'm recall correctly. And it seems like this forum that we're in tonight is not really the appropriate forum um for this discussion. I think if there's something that. Could be put into a warrant article, then, then that's a process that Bob has at his disposal and could pursue as a developer in town. But um, trying to end around or or come up with. Some secret play that gets around the authority of these boards after spending between two and three years at these public meetings. Is a little, in my opinion, disingenuous of Bob. The second comment I'd like to make is that, as uh, for those of you who are, have not been read in on the forty B process. Uh, the MGL chapter forty B was enacted years, uh, in some cases decades before a lot of environmental laws. Including the Wetlands Protection Act, the Clean Air Act, the Clean Water Act, and several other uh regulations, policies, procedures. Um, that have since been enacted by our state government and the federal government in pursuit of protecting clean drinking water. Clean air and the environment and the wetlands and the water resources, and that's a long list. It goes on and on. Um, I really appreciate Bob for being honest with us tonight and admitting in this public meeting that he weaponized. Chapter forty B because he wasn't getting his way with other activities, other permitting process in town. And quite honestly, um, at his original forty B hearings and both our private conversations and public conversations. The things that you don't hear about are the reservation of rights for the remaining land to do an open space development. So you might see on paper that the trajectory or whatever was five homes. But really, it was going to be a super huge development all along, and it's disingenuous to sit here and say otherwise in front of this board. So thank you for taking my comments.
All right, thank you, Brian.
Eric, can I just address the process? I think it's important, so um.
Of course, I'll say, I'll say yes. I'm gonna caution a nature response. We don't get the back and forth, you know, it's always.
I'm not, no, I don't want, I don't want to go back and forth. I don't, I don't want to, I mean, there were some things said that I think are inappropriate, but I'll leave it at that. Um, what I wanted to address was Brian suggested that somehow a town meeting would be appropriate for the project on Coolidge Street. And I think Rick will agree with me that a forty B has one place to go, and that would be the ZBA. Um, and the propos- the project that I have proposed on Coolidge Street is a forty B. And it will go in front of ZBA as soon as we get our project eligibility letter and we put our application together. Um, it would be highly inappropriate for uh that project to go to town meeting. Um, so that's the process.
Yeah, understand. I made it clear at the beginning of this um meeting that this here is not a regulatory or anything. This is all.
Right.
This, this like was just simply facilitating and informational because there's too much information out there and whatever.
The, the one thing, Eric, that we haven't addressed tonight, and it's my mistake because I should have said it much earlier. Um, is that the reason the select board is important here is that my ask for the support of the town. And I, I said it, the support of the town and town leaders, but really, um, there is a process within forty B for that support. And it comes from the select, and that's why I've gone to the select board. It's called a local initiative project. And that's what I'm seeking from the select board, and so the select board is the natural place for me to go to have this conversation. I mean, you know, I, the thing about it is that I am, if, if, if the answer is no to anything I put in front of you, then the answer is no. But the, I do understand the process of how all of these things work a lot better than almost everyone on this call. And I follow the process. I don't have any choice. I have to follow the process. And you don't go to town meeting with a forty B. If you want a lip, you go to the select board. I'm doing all of those things. I'm trying to show up in the right places and ask the right thing. If the select board wants to do this, God, I would love it. If you don't, you're just gonna tell me, but it's your, it's your role. Um, and the fact that we've got all these folks here is that I know the select board wants to know what the public thinks as they contemplate this concept.
Understandable, absolutely. All right, um, next one up is Karen. If I'm pronouncing my name right, it could be Karan. Feel free to ask.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, um, yeah, thanks for the presentation, Bob. Um, I'm kind of need this, so sorry if my question.
Sorry, can you, can you just um actually identify yourself and where you live in town?
Yeah, so um, I live at thirty five Brush Hill Road, um. And just moved into town.
Okay, yeah, please go ahead with your question. I will tell you, you're a little chop. We, just so you know, your, your connection isn't that great, but please ask your question.
Um, so, okay, thank you. Um, you made a comment that uh the um, the town of Sherbin has been applying some of the rules and regulations of the town. Um, not quite consistently. Um, I'm not sure what you meant, but I thought you'll elaborate or maybe give example. Um, and then the other, one other comment that you made was that um, some developer went bankrupt because of the um. Projects not being approved, and that impacted the economy of the town. Could you also elaborate a little bit more on that?
Sure, I'll answer the, I'll answer the second question first because it's a little easier. Um, the sec- the second question, the developer originally was called Rising Tide. Um, now the, well, the project's gone through a bunch of different names, but most people know it, I think, as Whitney Farms. Uh, and it's a community, I, I wanna say, Rick, sixty something homes, maybe? Uh, I can't, something like that.
Forty, forty-eight, believe it or not.
Oh, is it four, forty-eight? Okay, yeah, and it's up near Ashland, and what happened was there was ten years of litigation. Uh, and, and what ha- the, the problem is, is that the developer going bankrupt and all the litigation and everything that happened. Just caused this construction site to be a part of our town and still is. Um, and, you know, the, 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 the places couldn't get built, a stigma developed around the project, and it just. It just was a horrible outcome for the town, obviously for the developer, but, you know, for the people who live there, who have lived there for ten years. While this thing just drags on and on and on, and I don't know the specifics. I, I really know very little about it. But I do know that it's not good when a developer goes bankrupt in a project. It's, it's unhealthy, and it, it does hurt the town. Um, the second question, uh, Karan, is that uh, I'm, I'm not sure anybody wants me to answer. A question about my thoughts on the regulatory process in Sherbin. Um, I, I have a lot of frustrations over many, many years, um, and I, I don't think that um, I should, I should do that. Um, if you want to call me offline, I'm happy to spend some time and, and talk you through some of the things, but I, I just, I don't want to put people, the folks through that.
That was a good response, Bob. Uh, I'll, I'll say one thing about the Whitney Farms. Man, it got kinda infamous for this. Uh, I pushed back on it. It was forty bit proposal. When it went to court, not only did the town lose, but the court gave them more units than they originally asked for on their initial development. So it was like beyond a loss. The way to have a negative loss, like even, like, lose, lose, you'd lose regular. I don't know how else to describe it. Um, Whitney Farms has been that casebook example, to the point other communities have cited the Sherbin Whitney Farms loss as reasons why they don't go to court. Um, Rick, you, you have your hand raised.
Yeah, here we go. Yep, no, no. Um, okay, so I'm, I'm not speaking as, as a ZBA member on this, but I do have uh some views as a. As a nearly forty year resident and a forty-four year practicing lawyer. Um, I, I agree with Bob that where a forty B goes, particularly if you want it to be a lip, a local initiative project, you start with the select board. And I, and I get it, that's what, that's what you're seeking here. Um, I, I also agree uh with Bob that, you know, deeply affordable housing and apartment type uh units, or whether it's apartment or condo. Um, you know, that's, that's in the town's interest for a whole bunch of uh social and political and other, other reasons. Um, and, and so, you know, maybe his project has merit, at least in my own eyes. Um, uh, the one part of this that doesn't make any sense to me at all as a, as a, as a commercial real estate lawyer. Who's been involved in dozens and dozens of multi-party projects with lots of infrastructure built by A, and then B and C are trying to use the infrastructure. I, I've never seen a situation where uh B and C um, it got a free ride. And, and, and I don't know what the negotiations are between Bob and, and Toll Brothers, but um, I, what I thought I heard was. This excess capacity is here and it's free, and I'd like it for my worthwhile project, and that is just. Completely at odds with, with forty years of experience. No, nobody in Toll Brothers has ever done that, that I've seen.
Yeah, no, that's a, that's a really good question. I, I totally get your question. Um, and what I would point you to uh is legislation that was written by the town and passed at town meeting. And if you go to section twelve of that legislation and you read. How the, the water and sewer district works going forward, you will see, it surprised me when the legislation was written that way. But it reads that a developer can show up and plug in, um, and, you know. I wouldn't have written the legislation that way, but people didn't want my view on how to write the legislation. By the way, Rick, I did go and try to buy in, like you're suggesting would be appropriate. I tried to do that. Um, and I got ghosted. Um, and, you know, we can, we can debate whether, why that happened or how it happened, whatever. But I can tell you that if you read the legislation, uh, you'll be quite surprised.
Um, yeah, I, I, I hear you on all that, Bob, and, and I appreciate the cleverness of the argument based on the legislation. I'm just telling you, I got forty-four years' experience. I've never seen it work with a developer who was awake, and Toll Brothers is awake, so good luck to you.
I appreciate it.
Yeah, yeah, there's obviously quite a few details.
Right.
Obviously, um, are there any other questions? This surprises me. All right, good. I don't want this meeting to get over too early. Uh, Jane, go ahead.
Hi, I'm Jane Branch. I am at fifteen North Main. Um, thank you for the presentation, Bob. Um, I don't know a ton about forty B, but I did have a question. Um, it seems unusual that um a single company or individual would have. So many forty B projects pending in our town, and I wanted to know if there was a limit uh legislation wise. Um, of how many are possible? Is there a threshold with meeting? Um, this affordable housing um, limit. Um, whether or not that forty B legislation is then able to continue to be used. And the second part of my question is, um, should. In your ideal world, if all of these projects go through and all of the properties get developed. Um, it's potentially increasing the population of our town by like ten percent, nearly ten percent. And how do you propose that this would affect the services in town? And how, how would the town be able to support this increase in population?
Sure, sure. Um, so, help me. Your first question was about how many forty B projects can you do in one town at a time? I think that was your first question. Um, yeah, I would point out that now that two of them have been denied. Um, there are currently uh one uh project before the um. Uh, sorry, there, there are two. There's one in stay. Washington is, is in a stay, a holding pattern. Uh, and Brush Hill has just opened, so currently I have two going in town, and I intentionally um didn't do them all. The same day. I don't think Rick would have been willing to speak to me in the meetings. Um, so I didn't do it that way. I spread them out. Um, now that two are denied, I've come forth with two more. Um, and, you know, th- there, if, if they all get litigated, then maybe they'll all come out of litigation at the same time. I hope not. Um, I don't intend them, intend to build them all in the same year. Uh, that's not something that would be good for me or good for the town. I completely agree. Um, you know, honestly, the, the compromise proposal removes a little bit of that pressure, right? Um, it, it removes, uh, I'm not getting uh to develop as much affordable housing. Um, it, it removes, uh, I'm not getting, uh, to develop as much affordable housing as I have proposed. Um, but I'm okay with that, uh, you know, I, and I think certainly from certain perspectives, and you've mentioned, uh, one or two of them, that would be better for the town. Uh, so in some ways, um, you know, my compromise is in part about avoiding the mutually assured destruction that I spoke to earlier. But it's also because I think, kind of the compromise, if I put on my hat, instead of, i- if I take off my affordable housing, um, proponent hat, uh, and put on my town, uh, resident hat, I would say my compromise solution has a lot going for it. Um, and I would encourage the select board to consider supporting the, uh, the Coolidge project. Um, I, I think there's, there's a lot to be said, you know, in terms of impact on the town. Uh, you know, that's positive about the compromise. Um, you know, none of us know how this all turns out in the end. Um, but I don't intend to build five, all five of these projects all at the same time. I, it, I, I couldn't do it and I wouldn't do it, and the town wouldn't want it anyway, so we're, we're kind of in alignment. Um, regarding some legal prohibition, um, I, I don't think there's any legal prohibition that I'm aware of that's, that's, um, applies in this situation, I guess I would say. Um, that's not to say that there might, might be some stuff in the law. I, I would guess that there is somewhere. But, um, I've, I've looked through it. I've had my attorneys look through it, and there's, I, I'm not aware of anything that applies. Um, and like I said, I've tried to be reasonable in kind of bringing them forth in sequence rather than, you know, in a bunch. Um, did I answer your whole question? I'm sorry, was there anything else I missed?
Sounded like it was to me.
Yeah, okay, yeah.
You can do the forty B, so at some point you can touch on the, uh, the ten percent safe haven, where if a community actually exceeds ten percent of affordable housing, then actually the forty B, you can propose a forty B, but can't bypass local regulations. That might be something that was intended there. We all take that for granted.
Yeah, I mean, as soon as the town gets to forty B, and that's something, it's a good point, Eric, that I'd like to touch on. Um, that ten percent number, uh, of safe harbor, um, and people have heard me on this topic many times, safe harbor doesn't equal affordable housing. You can, you can have three percent of affordable housing in your town and be in safe harbor. Um, that's the way the math works, and there's a, you know, I call it a loophole or a, a backdoor, where you don't have to build ten percent of affordable housing. You can build three percent and be done. Um, and that's what's gonna happen. If Toll Brothers does the project, we'll end up with about four and a half percent of affordable housing, and we'll be in safe harbor. Um, but what I would say is, is that, um, in some ways, what the town is looking for in safe harbor is control. The town wants to control what happens. I get that. That's appropriate. We all want to control what happens. However, I would say that, that, you know, and this is gonna be a slight negative. Um, the town's behavior over the last three years, um, has caused it to lose control. Instead of sitting down, when I call people in town and I, three years ago, two years ago, and I say, I want to sit down and talk about this, I, I want to get some stuff done, and I want to work with you. And everybody says, no, we're in safe harbor. We're not supporting any affordable housing. Um, well, so you lose control when you do that. Uh, and that's a choice that the leadership in town made. Um, in my opinion, it was a poor choice because they lost control. If you work with somebody, you have some control. So I'm coming back to you tonight, and I'm saying, look, I'm offering you some control back. Um, you know, let's talk about how all of this can be done in a different way that's better for the town. And you have a say, you have control. But if you leave tonight and the select board declines to have any further discussion of this, again, you lose control because the control is ultimately probably with the Housing Appeals Committee. Um, they're gonna decide the fate of all of these projects. And I'm happy to go there, um, because they, they favor affordable housing. The, the, the bar is high for a town to turn down affordable housing projects. And, um, so I, I want to go and, and have it, have it be adjudicated in that venue. Um, but I am suggesting that if the town wants control, then we can sit down and talk about compromise, about collaboration, about helping, uh, achieving some of these goals. And I, I can't imagine there are many people on the call who think that all of my goals are garbage and that I, I just don't have anything intelligent to say. They, I'm sure there are lots of people who disagree with a lot of my goals, but, you know, h- how can you say it's okay for us to be at three percent of affordable housing? Um, uh, and it's not for me. And I've decided, you know, and somebody, somebody said to me recently, well, I think people in town have figured out that you're not going away. Um, that you have the will and the means to see this through. And that's true. Uh, and that's not threatening, it's just a fact. Um, and I will see this through. And, but I'd, I'd rather see it through without litigation. I really, really would. Um, it's, it's, it's not healthy for you all, and it's not healthy for me. Um, and I, I don't want to do it. So I want, I want to engage, and that's what tonight is about. And I'm, I'm grateful that so many people came out, frankly, so.
Very good. Okay, I'll go down the list here, but I'm gonna make, you know, as chair, I can make one little comment. I realized eight years ago you weren't going away, Bob. That's all I gotta say. Whatever it was, whatever it was, the planning board. Um, Carrie Houston, if someone can unmute her, please?
Hi, I'm Carrie Houston, thirty-five Brush Hill, just moved to town. Um, so I have a question in regards to transportation for these forty B, um, proposals. I work with a lot of lower-income families, and transportation's a huge issue. And a place like Brush Hill Road is not a place where you're gonna have a bus go safely down there. As far as I've noticed, I've, I'm new here in town, but there's not public transportation. Like, what choices or what, um, how are the decisions for these locations being made? Is the, are these the best locations for people who, um, may need transportation? Um, if you could just kind of elaborate on that for me?
Yeah, no, that's a good question, Carrie. So, one of the things I would say is that Brush Hill is not a deeply affordable community, okay? Brush Hill will be eight homes, two of which will be affordable. Um, and there, those homes are really designed to go to, uh, people who, you know, work in the town. They, they're, they, they're firefighters, EMT people, or they're teachers, and they're people who make, you know, a, a living wage, and they, um, but they can't afford the million-dollar house in Sherburne, right? So they get to go in and buy this, call it two hundred and seventy-five, three hundred thousand dollar house. Those are not folks who are without cars. Um, and, um, you know, so I think that the Brush Hill example, um, is, is not, you know, to, to say, oh, well, you need public transportation to have affordable housing. Um, you know, I, I, I've had a lot of conversations with people in, uh, the state about this, people who work in housing. Um, and, you know, what they say is, yeah, there's, there's, uh, you know, poorly resourced people who definitely don't have cars, and they need to live in a place where there's public transportation. But there are all, there are a lot, a lot of, you know, under-resourced folks who do have a car. Maybe it's not the nice cars that we all drive, but they have cars. Um, and they get around, and, you know, I, I've actually, you know, I think it's a little unfair for those of us who have what we need, for the most part, in our community, um, to turn around and say that people, eh, to, to try to tell, you know, uh, less well-off people what they need and what they don't need. Um, and the state will tell you that there's, there's a need for affordable housing everywhere. Um, and I'm not building so much of it that that's a problem, right? There's, there's gonna be plenty of demand. Nobody's gonna move to my Coolidge Street building, my deeply affordable building. Like, I, I kind of answered, I hope, the Brush Hill question. Um, but moving over to Coolidge, nobody's gonna move to that building in Coolidge, and that is a, a very, um, uh, affordable place. It's, it's sixty percent of, uh, median income. And then there's a component of it, uh, at thirty percent, which is people who are really, really under-resourced. But nobody's gonna move there who doesn't have a car. You know, it might be a family of three or four, and they only have one car. Um, whereas, you know, we all have two cars, um, and, or many of us have two cars. Um, but, uh, you know, so I, I don't spend a lot of time worried about, um, that question. I think it, it, it works a lot better than you might, might expect. And by the way, thank you for doing the work you do. It's, it's good work.
Okay, before I recognize the next person, I will make one quick comment, at risk of saying whatever. Uh, is, uh, uh, if this gets built and the other college gets built, so whatever number units that is, you'd probably get the MWRT. Would actually do a, um, would actually, uh, you know, do a, make that, make that a worthwhile stop, make it worth their time to actually do a stop there. MWRTA, uh, for transit authorities, has actually the highest percentage of carless people, um, rely on it versus like the, the T or anything else like that. There's a term, I missed the term, dependent, whatever it is. Um, it's just kind of interesting fact. So if you get enough people centered, you probably would actually get, make it worth a while to come there. Uh, Max Walsh, please go ahead. Hmm, someone knows.
Hi, uh, Tia Max, while I got twenty-nine Greenwood. We, we just have a few questions. Um, the first couple of questions are more process points, which I think are best suited for the board. So, my superficial understanding of forty B is that an applicant is not allowed to dual-track a forty B development and a conventional development. And so I have a question on tying together conventional developments at Washington and Farm in Greenwood, bundled together with the town support for a forty B development at Coolidge, and how that works, whether the applicant can kind of tie one development with another? And then to Bob and Rick's point that the venue for forty B is VBA, rather than the select board or the planning board, would that actually still be the case if an applicant is tying a non-forty B project with forty B project? And how would that work in all personalities if this settlement went through? So that's kind of the first question. Um, and we also just have questions on what the full sort of support looks like. If the Coolidge Crossing project doesn't go through for one reason or another, or if Toll Brothers doesn't give a free option to Bob to tie into their system, but the town, what does the town need to do to give its full sort of support? What's it gonna look like? Um, if it just doesn't go through, but, you know, because they, they require something that he doesn't provide, or a magnitude of different alternatives that could kind of make it go sour, what's that gonna look like for the other proposals that are tied to getting a full sort of support?
Did you get that, Bob?
Um, I, I think maybe Tia needs to kind of go through it one by one with me. That was a lot. Um, just asking all, yeah, I, I, I got a little of it. But Tia, do you want to ask the first question? I'll, I'll try and quickly answer. It, it had to do with, with venue, I think, right?
Yeah, I, I honestly, I don't, you're, you're the right person to answer it.
Well, yeah, oh, I, yeah, so you were asking about the, um, uh, the ability of permitting forty A versus forty B projects. Um, that's, that was your first question. Now I remember it. Um, I mean, I have obviously checked with counsel on that topic, uh, deeply, uh, and have been told, uh, that it's very appropriate, uh, that, uh, to do that. You can't do it, I will say, Tia, in the other direction. You can't go in and try to do a forty A project, which is a by right local type of project, uh, and then turn around and do a forty B. You're required to wait a year to do that. Uh, it's called a, um, cooling off period under chapter forty B. Uh, if I misspeak or you disagree, Rick, jump in, but, um, that's my understanding, is that you can't go in that direction. If I came and said, I want to do five homes on Farm Road, and the town said no, and then I said, okay, it's forty B time, they would say, no, you gotta wait a year. And in fact, that's exactly what happened at Farm Road. The town said no, the Board of Health said no, and I said, okay, I'm gonna do a forty B, but I knew I had to wait a year, and I did. Um, and that's how it went down. The other direction, my counsel tells me, there is no issue in the other direction. In other words, going from a forty B to a forty A. And I will point out that I'm not really, eh, eh, I'm tying them together in that I'm looking for town support. But at the same time, I'm not seeking any, eh, I'm not seeking to do anything I can't do standalone, right? So when I say I want to build five homes at Farm Road, all I'm asking for is a, um, you know, a process, uh, that is fair, under the local regulations, and efficient and appropriate, but fully going through the entire process. And so in some ways, even though I'm saying, well, I'll go back in that direction, you're not giving me anything on Farm Road. I'm, I'm gonna go and get what is possible at Farm Road. But I'm, I'm saying to you, the town, hey, uh, if I do that and we stop the fight, now that it's been denied on the forty B, then will you support my project on, um, on Coolidge Street? And I've, you know, I've thought long and hard and carefully about all the legal aspects of this, and I vetted it. Uh, I've also thought long and hard about the, kind of the moral aspects of it, right? What's okay and what's not okay in terms of, you know, kind of putting pressure on the town to do something?
Bob, sorry to, sorry to interrupt, but I think you mentioned Farm Road. Is that also the case for Washington Street?
Uh, on Washington Street, so i- i- and, and I don't know if you were on when I talked about the, kind of the concept of trust and verify. Um, but on Washington Street, I would see the same thing going on. We're in a little different situation because, uh, the ZBA has not denied Washington Street. Um, but, you know, the concept would be that the forty B would stay possible while we tried to achieve the four homes instead. And as soon as the four homes are achieved, then we would withdraw the application for the forty B. Or if we were in litigation, we'd withdraw the litigation. Um, you know, it's, it's trust but verified. But, Tia, I am going through a completely independent, you know, fully compliant process with all the required, uh, regulatory boards in Sherburne in order to permit those four homes. Does that make sense to you?
Uh, yeah, I think, I think that makes sense. Um, so then the trust to verify, I don't know if you could expand upon what that means and what it looks like if, if the Coolidge deal falls apart and kind of.
Sure.
To what extent you have thought about that.
Yeah, so, so I'll, I'll just give a theoretical example. Um, you know, we, we permit one home on Route sixteen on Washington Street. Uh, and we go to permit an open space subdivision, uh, for the other three. Let, I'm making this up, but let's say that, that were to happen. Um, and all of a sudden, we get through the, into the open space subdivision, and one of the local boards comes up with something. And maybe it's real. Maybe they come up with something that I totally didn't think of, and they deny the project. Or maybe, in my opinion, they are making something up, and I completely disagree with them, their interpretation of the law. Well, I would have two choices at that point. One would be, in theory, to litigate the forty A project, um, on the open space subdivision, which, by the way, is by right. It's not a special permit. Um, or I could choose to fall back and say, okay, fine, we can't do that, then let's go ahead with the thirty-unit apartment building. That would be the way I would see it going down. But this doesn't have to take forever. Permitting single-family homes can happen in a few months. It doesn't, it doesn't take.
If you, if you, if you permit a forty A home, how could you go back to the forty B for the apartment building?
Because I can just not use the permit. I can, I can just not use the permit. I can throw away the permit and go back to the apartment building. Now, if I.
I'm gonna read this one in a, I'm gonna read this one a little bit, because we got a whole slew of people. I was actually worried at the beginning, we weren't getting enough people with questions. This, you know, also, I, I will, I'll, um, Bob, if I'm gonna volunteer you, people can approach you offline as well, because when you talk about different iteration, what else and stuff like that. I want to keep the kind of, like, the big picture.
Sure.
Education on this as well.
Yep.
So if that's okay, Tia, I'm gonna, is there anything before I move on to the next?
No, thank you.
Doug Kinsley, Farm Road, go ahead.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Great. Uh, Doug Kingsley, one thirty at Farm Road.
Oh, you're echoing. Do you have two devices on? You're echoing. Do you, do you have two devices on, by chance? I don't have to mute one, perhaps, so. I don't know why you have an echo. I don't know why you have an echo. No, that's, you don't, I want to mute that one. That's your main device. Try it again. Maybe it's just catching up.
Can you hear me now?
Yeah.
Uh, can you maybe just turn down the volume on your computer?
Yeah, that's right.
Can you talk a little bit more?
Yeah, give it a shot. Give it a shot. Let's see if they can understand you.
Turned on so much I couldn't hear. Can you hear me now?
More or less.
Yeah, you're still echoing, but go ahead.
Yeah.
All right, starting from the echo, I don't know what that is. Uh, I'm coming to these controversial projects late, but I think I'm coming up the learning curve pretty quickly. Uh, and I don't think it will be a surprise to you, Bob, that you're. Quite a controversial figure in town, as I've come to understand, uh, with a lot of detractors. I think they're close to. Half the number of people on this call that there are at the town meeting. So I think that's a, uh. An indication of the interest here. But I think after your presentation, I understand why that's so. I for one don't agree with many of your stated goals. I know some others in town don't as well, but I don't really want to bait them here. I've just commented to everyone on the phone here that. Boiling down your slide presentation. I think it's very clear to me that really the, what you're doing is you're threatening. And you use the word threatening in your words mutually assured destruction. Through lawsuits against the town. And I don't think that's the action of a citizen who has the best interest of the town in mind. And I'm guessing. That you're not doing any of this purely out of altruism. I think, I'm assuming you gotta have a strong financial motivation. Doing these projects. Um, I think you're explaining simply that you want to get what you want. You're gonna sue the town. And I think everybody should understand that that's the, the purpose of this presentation. So my question really to the board, which is rhetorical is. You know, are the boards here going to cut a global deal? With Bob out of fear because in his words, he's not going away and he's, and he's gonna sue us otherwise, or. Are we simply gonna ask him to follow the rules in town for any projects that he wants to propose? That's my comment.
Well, I'll take actually first steps since your question was to the boards. I made it tonight without taking a vote. In fact, I'm not combining an opinion, cause it's really right now. It just essentially, it's unusual using a mechanism of a mediation settlement done for one of the, one of the forty Bs. To kind of introduce this. So we've been advised, you know, to minimize our opinion on this and make this more informational. So to answer your question. Are, are we gonna prove this out of fear or whatever else? This will be discussed again. That much I can assure you. The select board will discuss again and to end, um. You know, at an open meeting and, um, the motivation behind it. I mean, I don't think it's gonna be out of fear, but it simply is what it is. And the motivation, um, almost doesn't matter what the motive is. We have something in front of us. And then, you know, as far as making it, we call it friendly forty B, our local initiative. Will be discussed before this board. And I think other boards are gonna discuss things as well. And, um, as Bob indicated, you know, um, that's more just this holistic thing. Each individual thing will still go before its permitting process. I'll let Bob, you add anything as well. You know, the question was to the board, but. I'm gonna ask you, cause I did send you a, a little note in your chat that says, you know, I want to keep things kind of concise, cause we're having quite a few more questions than I thought, but. I don't know if you have anything to add to what I just said.
No, not really. I mean, obviously I don't agree with what Doug just said. When the town denies a project and I litigate it. I don't consider that my suing the town. I consider that my responding to a denial that I think. Uh, is illegal and that causes litigation. So I, I don't agree that. My goal is to sue the town. Um, your comment about the money, uh, Doug, um. You obviously have not heard what most people on the call have heard in the past, which is. On all of these projects, I have committed to give a hundred percent of the money to five oh one C threes, uh, when it's over. Uh, and I've already begun to do that. I sold a property over on Farm Road that was developed. I made some money on that. I wrote the check. Um, and so I'm not motivated by profit. I give the money away and I enjoy giving that money away.
All right, um. Michael Mahoney. If I'm pleased, uh, I mute Michael.
Hi, hi, uh, thanks for the opportunity, um. I'll try to keep this as concise as possible. Um, I, uh, so just, just. Uh, it's relevant to sort of respond to, to Doug's, uh, point of view because I, frankly, before I met Bob, I, I, I had a. Very similar point of view, um, having, I'm gonna, so I'm fifty six Greenwood, I'm gonna butter to the, to Washington Street Greenwood. Um, land, uh, and, um, have started participating in this process about five months ago or six, I guess, a little bit longer now. Um, and, um, so again, like many of us on this call, trying to get up to speed to understanding the process. I, uh. I asked a question in one of the public meetings of Bob. Trying to understand the, um, the financial, uh, uh. And economic factors associated with these projects. And Bob's response in the public meeting was, hey, why don't you give me a call? I'll, I'll explain it to you. Um, and to his credit, I called him and I said, sure, let's talk about it. And, uh, and I went over to his house and we spoke for. I, I think I sat in your office, Bob, for about three hours that one day. And we've continued to have conversations since then. Bob and I do not agree on a lot of things. Um, there are some fundamental things we do agree on. Um, and, and so I guess what I would offer is, uh, that I think the, the, um. There is a lot of sentiment in citizen-like government, particularly in small towns, that has a lot to do with personalities. I have come to very much appreciate, and I, I don't want to say this particularly as I make these comments. Uh, how appreciative having become a part of this process as I am of the people who will participate in local government at the level that they do. Having sat in, um, most of the Z B A meetings over the last probably, uh, six months, um. Rick and Zach and Jonathan, uh, Jeannie, um, and Todd. I, I am incredibly appreciative of, of their work, um, on behalf of the town. Um, what I would say as it relates to this project, uh, or, or this thing is that, um, the very nature of. These proposals is that they get analyzed on a one for one basis. And ultimately they need to be evaluated to that degree. Uh, you know, what, what's the basis of this proposal for this parcel of land? We're not going to consider anything else. And that was one of the frustrations I think I had initially. Was that even on the Washington Street Greenwood project, we're considering Greenwood and Washington as separate projects, which makes no sense to any of our neighbors. And saying, there's a environmental impact, there's a water impact, there's a, uh, there's a lot of things to consider here that ought to be considered on a global basis. And in talking to Bob about it. He fundamentally agreed with that. We, we ought to be thinking more broadly, what's right for the town. I don't fundamentally agree with everything that Bob says. Um, but I will say this in response to Doug's question. I, I don't agree with the assertion that Bob is ultimately a. Fundamentally financially motivated guy who's, who's trying to make a buck on every last parcel of land that he acquires in town. I believe that he's motivated, whether you agree or not. One way or the other, whether you agree or not, whether it's altruistic or, or not, I think he's fundamentally grounded in a sense that. Affordable housing is an important initiative. We're gonna try to figure out a way to do it. We might not agree, all the people on the call may not agree with, with the way he's going about it. That's kind of irrelevant, I think, and I, and what I would encourage everybody in the call to consider and the town to consider is the fact that. Um. Forty B is a reality. It is not something that we are going to be able to run away from. And whether it's Bob or somebody else. Um, we are gonna be in a position where we ought to be thinking. Strategically about how Sherburne addresses the reality of being in safe harbor. Addressing, uh, forty B, whether you're in favor of affordable housing or not. I happen to be in favor of affordable housing. That said, I don't think putting a. You know, forty unit apartment building on Washington Street, a hundred yards out my back window behind me, isn't necessarily the best thing for the town. That, that's irrelevant. If, again, I think if we don't think strategically, we're gonna end up in a situation where. Litigiously, we're gonna ultimately end up in a result that maybe isn't the best outcome for the town. So I'm, I'm fundamentally in thinking about what Bob has put on the table as a, as an owner of several different properties in town. And thinking about, geez, what's the best use for these different properties that he now. Has a right to go and apply under regulation, but also using forty B as a, as a. Um, way of, um, ultimately delivering. A, a development outcome. We ought to consider that. And we're in a position where unlike. If Bob were an individual developer on one property and focusing all his energy and all his money on one. Um, we might have less ability to influence that. And so. I, I think that what Bob has put on the table ultimately is. Um, in the grand scheme of things. Probably a better outcome for the town than, um, an apartment building on a piece of land. Again, I'm biased. I'm gonna butter. It's literally out the back window of my house here. I don't think a forty unit apartment building. On a piece of land out the back of my, uh, uh, back window of my house. Um, on, that, that relies on wells and sewer, et cetera. That probably the land, you, you know, there's a lot of debate. Bob would tell you his science says that it's fine. There's others who would say it wasn't. A lot of debate on that. But the idea of, okay, let's put something. Let, let's do this in a place where we're ultimately gonna have access to public sewer and water. Um, is, is to me a much smarter and more thoughtful outcome. Um, and so I guess what I would encourage everybody to consider is that in all local government, all local town government, you're always gonna deal with. The politics of personalities. And I, Bob and I have had lots of conversations. And I will tell you, when we walked into town meeting together. We, the, one of the things I said to him, I said, Bob, I think the biggest problem you have is a P R problem. You gotta figure out how to change hearts and minds here, not just, uh. You know, this isn't about science or rationale or what you can win in court. It's about like, pulling, pulling people onto your side. You can take that for what, what it's worth. But I, again, I, my, my, um, my. Uh, ask of the town is to, to thoughtfully consider the fact that, um. We are in a reality where there are regulations that are beyond our control. And I think that, that the way that Bob is ultimately proposing a, um, a development in town that thinks. More carefully about, um, each of these different properties. Is, uh, is a better out from the outcome for the town. It might not be perfect. I certainly don't think it's perfect. And Bob has heard me say that to him many times on phone calls. So, um. But I think engaging in this dialogue is healthy and I'm, um, and I'm very encouraged by seeing the number of people who showed up here tonight. Uh, to participate. So, um, sorry for being a little bit long-winded, um, but as somebody who has engaged in this. And tried to come, uh, to a level of, um. You know, uh, knowledge and at least, you know, catching up to all of our, um, uh, very, uh, faithful servants here in town. Who sit on these boards, uh, to, um, as, as an act of service. I would tell you that I, 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 I do think that this is worth consideration and I would, I would encourage. Um, the select board to think thoughtfully about it, um, as we think about, generally speaking, not just one property or another, but ultimately the health of the town. As we go forward.
I don't think response to everyone's question there, but thank you for your thoughts. That's, um, very good to know. Thank you very much. At there. Um, Rick. How you doing?
Not gonna speak to the substance. Um, but I thought I might try to, uh, again, wearing my individual lawyer hat versus a member of the Z B A. Try to untangle some of the confusion. There are an awful lot of smart questions in there, which Bob did a very able job, especially as a non-lawyer, trying to. Trying to field and untangle. Um, it is not Bob's fault, nor the town's fault. Um, nor the people serving the town boards fault, but all of these things fall at a very difficult intersection of zoning law. Chapter forty B, which is a special form of zoning law and real estate regulations and municipal law. So it's not easy. So can Bob be running all these projects at once? Well, there's a complicated set of rules for that, but in my view, Bob has stayed. Under the limit so far by, by timing when he's, when he's supplied things. That's okay. Um, I'm not a big fan of the forty B law, but it is a legitimate tool in the, in the developer's toolbox. It's not illegal, immoral, or fattening to use it. Um, how could these projects be tied together if there were to be a settlement? Paul Durensis is right. That is gonna be pretty complicated and, and difficult to enforce. It doesn't mean it's not a worthwhile exercise if the town decides to, to try to figure out a way to tie them together. I, I agree with Bob that there's a combination of trust but verify installing things and staying things where. There, there might be a way to parse your way through the thinking. But I do not want anyone on this call to think that's easy. We just walk down and pull out the standard form settlement agreement, sign it and we're done. Because it won't be anything like that. Um, and, and, and I, I guess I want to join, uh, everyone else who's been involved in this for years and years and, and thanking everybody for their, for their patience and. And positive approach. That's my position.
Very good thoughts. Good way, good way to put that together. Thank you, Rick. Uh, Jeff.
Yeah, I, I, Michael's points were very good. And I think that, you know, that's the whole reason we're having the meeting tonight. You know, we have an obligation. To listen to all the opportunities that are presented to us and. We're probably not gonna agree with anyone's proposal, but what we can try to find, I think, is maybe a solution that integrates. Perspectives. We all, a- and I firmly believe that Bob wants. In his heart of hearts to, to build affordable housing in Sherburne. We know, we all know we don't. And, and I think we all agree with that. So that's a point of agreement. And so what we really are trying to do is figure out the best way to do that while simultaneously. Focusing on obviously our water issues and, uh, other issues that we have by not having a public water supply. So that's why we're having this session tonight. Why we have such, whatever we're at now, eighty participants we're at right now. That's really a good sign. And Bob would tell you eighty is almost as many as we get at town meeting. And the first time I was elected to sec- select board, I won by twenty one votes. So, um, that, that's a valid, uh, conversation. So this input tonight. Even though you may or may not feel all your points are being heard, they, they truly are being heard, not only by the proponents. But by, you know, the various board members that are here tonight. That's why we opened the session by having each board. Who's comprised of, of volunteers to, to, to be a public session to hear this. So. We're, we're engaged, we're listening and, and, uh, trying to do the right thing for the town and, and we continue to listen. So. You can reach us after the meeting as well, as you well know. Thank you.
Absolutely. Um, Mary, oh, you changed your name from iPhone. Hi, Mary. Please go ahead. Yes.
All right. Thank you. Sorry. I didn't realize I was on iPhone. Um, I just had a couple of comments. The first one is, um. I just want to reiterate, I've said this in a number of public meetings, you know, over the years, but like, we don't, we don't. Oppose affordable housing. We support it. We think like anything that you can do to drive more housing in town that's affordable is a good thing. So that is not something that we're opposed to. Um, I did have a question for. Um, Mr. Murchison, he mentioned that litigation was underway for Farm Road and I'm not aware of any current litigation. So I was curious. If he could clarify that.
Sure. Um, our, uh, appeal to the Housing Appeals Committee was filed. What's today, Monday? I believe it was filed on Thursday or Friday, Mary. Uh, with the Housing Appeals Committee. And I'm sure you can find it in the docket. And, and I would guess that the town also has received that by now. So they should be posting it on the, uh, on the website.
Okay, that's helpful, cause I had checked with the town clerk and the select board office and they weren't aware of that as of noon today. So I appreciate that.
Yeah, Jeremy, have you, have you all not received the appeal? I can, I can send it to you by email. Um, you know, obviously it. You should receive it from the court or from the, the Housing Appeals Committee. But, yeah, it was filed either Thursday or Friday.
Okay, thank you. Can I ask another question, Eric?
Yeah, please.
Yeah, I, I want to applaud that the applicant, Mr. Murchison's comment that he's gonna go through the standard channels for permitting. Um, we appreciate that. We think that, you know, if, if the average resident in Sherburne needs to go through that, then, you know, I think the average by right developer should go through that. And so I appreciate that comment. Um, and finally, I just want to mention that. Um, you know, in that process, the sort of phasing of work, whether it's two homes or six homes or. You know, eight homes or something, that that should be visible to the boards that he goes before because. Um, you know, that's included in some of the regulations. And I think in the previous. Um, some of the previous discussions that we've had about these projects, there's been. A, a little bit of, um, I would say lack of transparency on the phasing. So it would be great if we could see the full picture. And if that full picture stops at six houses. We'd love to see that as opposed to sort of reserving open space in the background for a future development. So, um, that would be my comment.
Yeah, I, I think that comment, I, I, you know, the spirit of your comment, Mary, I completely agree with. I don't agree with the description of the fact pattern over these last couple of years. I don't agree with the description of the fact pattern over these last couple of years. Things have, the projects have certainly changed over time, but they they change not because I have a plan today. And I don't want you to know about it for six months, and then I let you know about it in six months. That's not what's been happening over these last few years. What happens is I'm very dynamic. When you run into one rock wall, then you go look for another rock wall to run into. And there is, I promise you, there's just the transparency in what I'm doing has always been there. When things change, it's, yes, they do change. If the Board of Health. When the Board of Health denied the the first two homes on Farm Road. I went and did a forty B and it changed. It went from what was gonna be five to to thirty two. That's absolutely correct. And I waited the statutory time. And I went and I did it. But it wasn't that I was hiding anything from you. I promise you, I don't hide things. I'm I'm. I have to be one of the most transparent developers out there. You know, it just doesn't work to hide things. Now. I don't necessarily agree with you that a board can. Hold you to something that you might do a year or two from now. That's not appropriate. I I guess you could, when you go to do the things later on, you could. Look backwards, but you can't really look forwards because you don't know what's gonna happen. And, you know, I'm not hiding it. I'm I'm. I'm just doing the best I can to follow the regulations. And your comment, interestingly. About, you know, my having to follow the same process as all of the other homeowners. I would argue that and the Board of Health would tell you clear out, flat out, that the rules are different. If you're building new construction in our town, the the Board of Health says that flat out, that the rules are different for new construction. They never ever will provide a waiver, no matter how minor it is, for new construction in our town. And yet, you know, all of our neighbors who have houses. They get the benefit of getting a break from the from the town regulatory process. So I would argue that the. The out of the ground by right developers are held to a higher standard. Than somebody who already has a house in town. And, you know, I I can find that kind of frustrating, as you might imagine. But, you know, it is what it is. So anyway, I I honestly, the transparency thing, I I think is. Is a bad call, as Michael will tell you, you know, call me up, ask me what I'm doing, I'll tell you. I don't find it's helpful to hide things. I I find that it's much more helpful to be transparent with you all.
If okay, Bob, I'm gonna move on to this. Uh, Brian.
Hi, it's Brian Moore. Again, just to reiterate. From day one, Bob, it it has not been about those two or three houses. It was a, we are going to reserve our right. For the back lot to do some kind of development, whether it was a development by right. Which basically puts us exactly where we are with the forty B, one giant combined septic system right on my property line. And I'm sorry, it seems that you like to present history through the lens of someone who is trying to do good. But the reality is, is that at each turn, you're pitting one board against the other. And it's it's really not constructive. If you would just come up with a single plan that you could commit to. Which is what you're presenting here tonight, I believe. Yet in your in your lawyer's distribution of of what you're talking here about tonight. You're reserving these other rights for the other land that you own. So at every turn, it seems like you're always reserving something in the background, which isn't gonna see the light of day until you get what you want.
To be honest, Brian, I I'm not sure what you're talking about reserving of rights. I don't remember. That phrase in anything I've distributed, but if you tell me it's there, I can.
We asked you before you were in front of any public board. If you would commit to a certain number of houses on Farm Road. And you said no, you said you were going to reserve the rights for the remaining land on Farm Road to do as you see pleased.
And I and I said that, honestly, yeah.
Eric would like us to finish and then you can talk. Okay? And at the time, I believe you were sitting on a board discussing with other people in town about open space development. So you were on both sides of this fence. You were going to develop a couple of houses up front and have open space development in the back.
Yeah, that's right. That's correct.
So you're playing both sides of that hand.
I I'm not sure what the issue is, Brian, and I don't think Eric wants us to relitigate the last three years. I'd love to, but I I don't think Eric wants us to do that.
Yeah, I am cautious. I understand. I knew there'd be some emotions with this. I want to be cautious. I'm bringing up. Things in the past do matter to some degree, but really, we're looking at what's in front of us now. And I do want to just look into the merits. I think I alluded to it. Someone asked, like, I think it was. The fellow on Farm Road asked, you know, we're gonna approve this out of fear, whatever else. We're looking at this, it is what it is. Motivations and actions of the past only matter to to help us, you know, decide how we actually create these certain mechanisms. But really, to make something happen here, but really, we're just gonna look at this as it is what it is. I don't know how else to describe it. It's just, it's what it's what's before us right now. And and like I said, this this meeting is basically informational. So I'm trying to veer away from like, you know. I don't know how else to describe it, you know, I'm. Trying to take the motions out of this. That's what I'm trying to do. I'm trying to take the motions out of this. And maybe there have been past actions which drive emotions and reactions. Again, I'm just trying to look this for what it is. Darrell.
Okay. Hi, I just have a minor point, just to clarify for folks. For the two Farm Road homes that were referenced a couple of times. The Board of Health never got to voting on approval or not. There were some outstanding data needs. And and then they were withdrawn. So just wanted to clarify that. Thank you.
Yeah, Darrell is correct. I agree with that, that it was never formally denied. That's correct.
Okay. All right, we reached a certain point in the evening at which there are no ones up and it's only nine forty one. It's not too bad. Is there any last minute questions relative to this? Anything about the process? Any questions to the board itself and the public to to the select board? All right, any other comments from the board? All right. So thank you very much, Bob, for coming forward with this presentation. I think it has helped pulled it together. This will be on YouTube within a few days, so people want to look at it. I think we maxed out eighty five participants, which has got to be one of the records we've had, at least in these meetings. That's why I also did want to do this one in Zoom as well. We're gonna deliberate as a board. I know, say, some of this is also under the mediation settlement, so we're talking to council as, you know, how to take next steps, what it is. Just rest assured, this will be discussed with us again and other boards as well. Any other, if any other last minute things, I'll take a motion to adjourn now.
You should let the other boards.
The boards have opened. So who actually opened? Raise your hand if you're board chair, yeah?
Eric, can I just say one last thing? I want to reiterate that anyone who wants to give me a call and follow up on any questions or issues they've heard tonight. I I love talking to people about this stuff, obviously, and my phone number is widely available. So not in the next two weeks because I'm on vacation, but. Starting August first, you can. You can circle back to me and I'd love to engage. Thank you.
Yep. So raise your hand if you're bored and need to close. I think ZBA, yeah. All right, go ahead, Rick. In fact, you know what? I don't know if Jeremy, can you unmute everyone? You know, we had that thing, is anyone can just have a free for all on this one here, just to kind of speed it up. But, okay, Rick, go ahead. All right, do the board members agree? You can raise your hands.
Agreed.
Okay, sounds good. Darrell, I think you're next.
Okay. I'd like to make a motion that we close the Board of Health meeting. All in favor? So Darrell, I.
Diana Hook, I.
Stephen Godzatina, I.
Okay, thanks.
And who else? But I don't think planning board had a quorum.
Planning board, oh, again.
Cutting board did have a quorum and we did open our meeting. So go ahead, Addie May.
Uh, yes, a motion to close, I moved to close the meeting. For the planning board. Okay, moving second, Addie May, I, Frank Hope.
I.
Jim Guarino.
Hi.
Stephanie Harrison.
Hi.
And was Rob Wolf on here?
No.
Okay, so planning board closed.
I think our historical commission was another one. So I hear from historical commission, raise a hand. Land acquisition didn't get a quorum. Affordable Housing Trust didn't get a quorum, I don't think. How about advisory? Is that quorum for advisory?
Not open, nor did we have quorum. Thank you.
Okay. Hey, Darrell, can I lower your hand? Good. All right. Oh, I went back up again. Darrell, did you have some? Okay, I guess not. It was me that lowered. She brought it back up. All right, how about the select board? I think that's the last ones now.
Move to adjourn.
All right, so moved to a second. All right, all in favor of Stephen?
I.
Jeff?
Hi.
Marion?
I.
And Paul?
Hi.
As much as I'm having fun, I'm gonna be I as well. All right. Okay, this means.
For inviting us all.
Absolutely.
And the answer to one person's question, the presentation is, I believe, on the select board website, on the town website.
Okay. All right, thank you all. And see you either at the transfer station or Farm Pond.
Both or both.